We'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you. I.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. It's September fourteenth, ten o'clock. All three county commissioners are here. And we will now move to consent and approval. The county administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning. Morning.
We have no exonerations to approve this morning. Minutes for September seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Vouchers: General County Fund, five hundred and sixteen thousand, two eighty-six, thirteen, nine-one-one, one thousand, five fifty-eight, eighty-nine. Chestnut Ridge Park, two thousand, four forty, eighty-two. Camp Muffley, five thousand, five forty-five, forty. Mason Dixon Park, eight forty-five, fifty. Mon County Center, three thousand, seven seventy-six, fifty-five. Transportation levy, nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, two eighty-eight, ten. Library levy, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight fifteen oh-four. Assessment valuation, three thousand, one eighty-four, ninety. Payroll, one million, eight hundred, twenty-four thousand, one oh-two, twenty-six. Morgantown Industrial, TIF, one twenty-three, nine fourteen, sixty-seven. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, nineteen thousand, three fifty-seven, forty-seven. Nine-one-one, one thousand, forty dollars. Home confinement, five thousand, three ninety-eight, twenty. Chestnut Ridge Park, three thousand, nine twenty-four, fifty-eight. Camp Muffley, three thousand, six ninety-two, seventy-six. Mason Dixon Park, ninety dollars, five cents. Mon County Center, one thousand, fifty-six dollars and fifty cents. Assessment valuation, seven thousand, ninety-five dollars, sixty-three cents. Yes, there's an echo.
Okay.
Voters registration, seven seventy oh-three, for a voucher total of three thousand, six eighty-nine, one eighty-three, forty-eight. We have position vacancies for boards and authorities listed on our website. Fiduciary orders for September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. And then you have three additional fiduciary items.
I'd like to make one clarification. On payroll, what did you say then the amount was?
Uh.
I think you said twenty-four.
I'm not sure what I said, but it's one million, eight twenty-three, one oh-two, twenty-six.
Okay.
You had said twenty-four. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
So I move to, with that clarification, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
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 It might have been the echo that I was.
Yeah.
Um, the first fiduciary item is a petition to remove the administrator in the Benny Wilson estate. Uh, if you recall, that estate was, uh, the petition was brought to you about a month ago. And you gave, uh, you gave the current administrator, I think it was three weeks, in order to bring everything up to date. From the fiduciary department, nothing has been filed in that estate, so I just need a motion on whatever it is you guys want to do.
I would, go ahead.
Move to remove the executor.
Move to approve the petition to remove.
Yeah, approve the petition.
I would second that.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, the second one is the Shelby Leary estate. There was a recommendation by the fiduciary commissioner, Beth Mina, to, um, go ahead and remove the, um, the executor in the estate.
Right.
Um, everything has been brought up to date. Um, the settlements have been filed, uh, by the, the current executor. So, um, I think at this point, you could probably just reject the recommendation by the fiduciary commissioner.
So move to reject the recommendation of fiduciary commissioner to remove the executor.
Second.
Poppy moves in second to reject. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Shelby Leary.
That was Shelby Leary for the third one.
Sorry.
Um, this is the estate of Edith, Virginia, Ruth Parenti.
Right.
And this is an objection to annual accountings.
Would, um, move that the objection be set for hearing? I believe it's already been communicated to Commissioner Armstead's office that that request has been made. So with the provision, of course, that they post the deposit with the clerk for the hearing.
So the motion was.
To, to, uh, refer it to the fiduciary commissioner to have a hearing.
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, good. Okay, hold on. Okay. Uh, introduction of new employees. Sheriff?
Yeah, it's a good one.
You got your song ready? Today I'm presenting Christopher Lowe as the new deputy sheriff, starting September sixteenth, at a starting salary of four thousand, six hundred, sixty-six dollars, sixty-seven cents per month. Full benefits on a one-year probation period, and that brings me down to six.
Move to approve, uh, personnel as presented?
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Welcome.
Welcome to the county.
Thank you.
Stay safe.
You're number seven, so remember that. See, now you're seven, so now we're down to six. Do we have any others?
Not that I'm aware of, sir.
Okay. Okay, at this time, we will have comments from the public. Anybody who would like to come down, please state your name, address, and feel free to speak to us. We have a special proclamation later, so you do not, yeah, the proclamation will be done right afterwards. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Sure, come on down. You state your name, address, and.
My name is Andrea Street, and I used to live in Bonfista. I was in A nine. My unit was the one that started the explosions. My concern is that there was zero fire safety. Any, there was nothing in place. They were cited for not having sprinklers. They were cited for not being a safe habitat. I had issues with several electrical repairs that were brought to their attention, and they refused to do them. They refused them because they said that there were new owners coming in, and they didn't want to pay for anything. Because of that, and because of not making it a safe building, twelve units got destroyed. My dog got killed. I live in a constant fear of this happening again. And not knowing if the next place I go to is going to be safe. And it took forty-five minutes for us to get any kind of help from the fire department. Because they didn't want to call somebody else for help, and they wanted to be the first.
Take your time, ma'am.
The fact that I had to stand there and watch everything be destroyed for forty-five minutes is unacceptable. When there are fire departments five minutes away that could have helped. And nothing was done. We all lost everything. There was a girl that just got married. She lost all her wedding stuff, her wedding dresses, our jewelry. People went in there and stole items of the bottom units. Everything from her wedding is gone. These are things that cannot be replaced. The memories and the haunting always going to be there. I don't want this to happen again from another place. If sprinklers are an issue, tenants need to be aware of the damage that can be caused from not having this protection in place. There were no firewalls. There were no fire escapes. There was no way to get out of that building. Fortunately, no one was hurt, and no one was stuck, but there were people that had to be carried out. Because there were elderly people in there that could not, they're not mobile. It's not accessible. And it's just getting swept under the rug. Nothing's happening. I'm so scared to be anywhere. Because I'm constantly seeing those flames hit me in the face. And that building is like a war zone. I don't know if any of you have seen it. But there's such an eerie feeling around that building right now. I don't know what can be done. But something needs to be done, so somebody isn't stuck in there, and somebody actually dies and not able to get out. Because from the top building, the only way to get out is to jump off the balcony, and the balcony was exploded. There's no way to get out of there. And there's no way to get out any of those buildings, those, those windows, nothing. A lot of those windows were painted shut, so the window's going to be opened. It's a death trap, and I'm scared that somebody else is going to be in this position. And they're going to be trapped. And they can't get out. That, that's, that's it. I, I just don't want this to happen to somebody else. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I'm going to ask this to suspend the rules if.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Do you want to speak first before, because there are a couple of things I need to explain to.
Well, I appreciate you coming in, ma'am, and, and talking to us. Obviously, um, you know, my mind's swirling as far as what jurisdiction or what actually we can do, but it sounds like there's a lot of things that, that, a lot of entities that could respond to this, like the state, state fire marshal. We can have a conversation about why, you know, we have, we have, um, uh, what do you, what do we call the.
Mutual contract.
Yeah, we have mutual aid agreements in place with all of our fire departments, so it should never be a case of, it's not my problem. So, again, it, we need to, we, we can have the people that we control look into it as far as what went wrong and how it went wrong and how it shouldn't happen again. In, in terms of the building, and it sounds like most of those issues are fire issues, which the fire marshal can address. And if you leave us your information, we'll, we'll, we'll figure out who you need to talk to, um, in regards to, uh, you know, what could be done. It also sounds like there's some legal issues that should.
I have some information to give when you're.
So go ahead. I'm just talking from the top of my head, but.
And you're, first of all, I, what you experienced, I, I, we're extremely sad, and anyone losing a pet, we're all pet lovers up here. So, uh, I do want you to know that Brian Butcher reached out about a week ago when you spoke and sent the video, and asked what we could do. I've been in contact with Brian, and one of the things that really surprised me was what you brought up about. The, I, that we did not know, but in the two thousand and nine edition of the International Residential Code, it required new one and two-family dwellings to have townhouses include fire sprinklers. Unfortunately, the state of West Virginia defeated any movement to mandate sprinklers. So that is something that shocked me, but that, that is correct. Also, what we found out was the building was built before many of these rules went in, so they were grandfounded in. That doesn't make them right. It just makes now we have a problem. But since then, I have talked with Brian, in fact, yesterday, and he was asking about meeting with you, me, and I've asked for Jimmy Smith, to just discuss the one area that you brought up is, is a concern of all ours, which is a mutual agreement and why we are not working better together for the county volunteer fire departments and the, uh, city of Morgantown volunteer fire departments. And that's an issue that we are going to meet and discuss, and Brian's going to be in touch with you on that. Yeah, the problem is that the issues are state marshal issues, and we will immediately send that to them. And the problem is, they can be cited, but if there's no accountability, it doesn't matter what they do. So I am hoping that with Brian and I reaching out, then he will go back to city council. I will come back to the county commissioners to see what we can do to try and have this problem not happen again. You are exactly right. Um, I, I feel really badly, but I did want you to know that, and I'm going to give Brian credit, he did reach out. We've been trying to work on something. We're meeting hopefully next Thursday at, uh, eleven o'clock, and I appreciate you coming here. I didn't know if you wanted to.
No, it covers everything. We're so sorry for your loss, and, and we're certainly gonna, with Tom's lead here, we'll, we'll look into what, if anything, we can do to help.
Thank you, and we are sorry. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay. We have a proclamation on Constitution Week, and would you like to come down and read it?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Joan Gibson, Regent of Woodburn Chapter.
Feel free to come down here, please. We'd love you to come down.
Woodburn Chapter, and I'm representing the three Morgantown chapters, Colonel Zachael Morgan and Elizabeth Ledington-Hagans, as well as Woodburn. Proclamation, whereas it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the two-hundred-and-thirty-fifth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities. And whereas Public Law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated September fifteenth, seventeen through twenty-three as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Montegalea County Commission, by the virtue of the authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeen through twenty-three as Constitution Week, and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves, adopted this fourteenth day of September, two thousand and twenty-two, and signed by each member of the commission.
Move that we approve the proclamation as presented?
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we usually ring our bells.
Yes.
At four o'clock on the, on the courthouse square, because that is the time that they stepped out of Constitution Hall and told the crowd at four P M. on the seventeenth. We have a constitution. However, we have found out that West Virginia University football game supersedes that. And since they will be letting out about four o'clock, we're going to ring our bells at home on our own porches.
Okay, well, if that changes, just let us know.
Yes, please. Because we've always been a part of that, yes.
We can't, I don't think we can get through the traffic.
Oh, yeah.
Well, you know, after last weekend, who knows?
It is Towson.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Grants. Good morning, Colleen. I sent you the compensation.
I know requests for reimbursement. The first one's for the voca grant and the amount of eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars and eight cents. The next one is the seat grant and the amount of two thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine, fifty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents. The governor's highway safety program, Safe Communities, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty cents. Click-it-or-ticket, one thousand, thirty-six dollars and forty-nine cents, and impaired driving, three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy cents.
Move to approve the president signing the granted documents as presented?
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Colleen.
Thank you. Correspondence, letter from Judge Cindy Scott regarding the use of the courtroom for forensic, forensic class to be held by Judge Clodges on various dates in October and November. This is a usual, a yearly request.
Normally, we would put this on a new business, but I talked to you guys about it the last time we got a request, and you said that that was just an administrative thing, that I could go ahead and approve. So they've already been notified.
Okay.
But we will make sure that court security and the facilities department is also making preparations so that they, the gates will be opened for parking in the back.
Okay, thank you. There's really no need for a motion. Okay. Is there any other correspondence?
Yeah, I just received one other item. Actually, Colleen received it. Um, the Wayzett Town Volunteer Fire Department is celebrating fifty years of service to the community. They're having a open house on September eighteenth from two to four P M. Just, uh, just so you know.
Two to four. Would you mind just putting that on the counter?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other correspondence? Insurance?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to new business. Consideration of requisition number sixty-nine for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Developmental Development District subaccount.
New requisition is for eight hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight twenty-three oh-two, and these are collections for the month of August.
I move that we approve requisition number sixty-nine as presented?
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consideration of intergovernmental agreements for dog warden services between the county commission and municipality for the period July one, two thousand and twenty-two through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Move that we approve the agreements for Granville, Morgantown, Star City, and Westover as presented?
Second.
Poppy moves in second. Uh, do, any discussion?
Well, I clarified with Renetta prior to the meeting.
Morgantown was, yeah.
These, uh, I did, I did say everybody did, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, these agreements, the amounts are based off of the calls from last year, and then they take the rate from last year and add a three percent increase. And that, that number divided by twelve is their monthly fee for the, for the year going forward, so. Nothing else?
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. To consider for approval, a request from Wells Fargo Corporate Investment Banking for the release and replacement of F N M A G T D passed through Pool Cuspit number three, one, four, one, eight, E B, E nine.
Move to approve security pledge release as presented?
Second.
Move, Poppy moves in second with clarification.
This is just customary. We have to put this pledge in place to secure a bank account.
Oh, okay. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay. D, to consider for approval, funding request in the amount of five thousand dollars from Hazel's House of Hope to provide their clients with free ridership to the facility on the mountain lines, Don Knotts Route fifty.
I move that we approve funding request in the amount of five, five thousand dollars towards the Hazel House of Hope to provide clients with free ridership.
Second.
Poppy moves in second, and I believe this is in coordination with other nonprofits who are funding, and the city of Morgantown is putting five thousand dollars in. So just want to clarify.
Correct. I believe the total amount is twenty-five thousand?
Yeah, twenty-five thousand dollars is the total to run this program. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. E, to consider for approval, county commission resolution regarding Amendment Two, property tax modernization amendment.
Can I ask that the amendment be, or the, uh, resolution be read by our administrator?
Sure.
Lord, if you were going to do that.
Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Okay. Uh, preamble. During the two thousand and twenty-two general election, West Virginians will be asked to vote on Amendment Two, one of the most substantial changes to West Virginia's constitution in nearly one hundred years. It is not the place of the Montague County Commission to tell registered voters how to vote on this issue. However, the commission has a duty pursuant to Article nine, uh, chapter eight of the West Virginia Constitution to manage the fiscal affairs of Montague County, and therefore must inform the public of the potentially devastating and far-reaching impacts that Amendment Two could have on local government services in Montague County. Whereas, the Montague County Commission finds that the passage of Amendment Two will decrease control of local levying bodies and transfer that control to the state by causing the removal of certain constitutional protections that allow these bodies to provide critical funding for law enforcement, fire protection, emergency medical services, and public education. And whereas, the commission understands that the effect of the passage of Amendment Two only gives a future legislative, let, excuse me, future legislature the authority to exempt tangible personal property and equipment from ad valorem property taxation by general law. But by voting for this amendment, the public will be removing their current constitutional protections regarding this matter, and will be transferring this power to the legislature. And whereas, the commission understands that there is nearly universal understanding that once given this authority, that the legislature will move to exempt certain tangible personal property and equipment from ad valorem property taxation without any general consensus of the West Virginia House of Delegates, the West Virginia State Senate, and the governor of the state of West Virginia as to how the revenue reductions will be incurred by the local levying bodies, to be incurred by the local levying bodies would be replaced. And whereas, the commission finds that estimates of the six species of personal property that are currently being considered for elimination have shown to be in excess of five hundred million dollars, providing necessary funding for many vital county, city services, and public education in all fifty-five counties that could be stripped away and placed at risk, resulting in fewer police officers, emergency responders, teachers, and school service personnel. And whereas, the commission finds that any legislative plan to provide revenue replacement to local governments and schools must consider the up and down history of West Virginia's finances and acknowledge that state revenues are prone to times of boom or bust. And whereas, the commission finds that the residents of the state of West Virginia, including the hard-working residents of Montague County, will ultimately pay for the significant corporate tax cuts contemplated by the legislature in anticipation of the passage of Amendment Two. New sales taxes, higher real estate, how, higher real property taxes, other fees, or a combination could potentially be the result of the elimination of personal property taxes. And whereas, the commission finds that by appearance, there is no consensus, no agreement, and no clear path that the voters can read and fully understand. As we approach the general election, we believe the voters deserve a final, agreed-upon, and codified legislative plan for Amendment Two to inform their vote. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Montague County Commission, for the reasons above, shall not offer support for Amendment Two due to the transfer of local control that would pose a real and serious risk to the safety and welfare of our residents, adopted this fourteenth day of September, two thousand and twenty-two.
I move to approve the resolution as presented?
Second.
Poppy moves in second. Any discussion?
I'm sure you don't want to talk.
No, I'm not going to talk. I, I give you my word. Everything is in this. Everything's in this. I will be quiet.
No, it really is, but there's, again, thank you, Renetta, for, for, for reading that and, uh, for all your work in helping put this together. I mean, this resolution was a lot of back and forth between the commission, because this is a very sensitive issue. We don't want to be telling the, the public that they shouldn't vote to reduce their property taxes. But, um, that's not what this particular vote does. It removes power from local, uh, control and transfers it to the legislature. So we wanted, and we wanted to make sure that was perfectly clear. And we're not against cutting taxes. I mean, Mon County, we've lowered our rates for the past five years, and we're the only one in the state to have done that. And we have the lowest county rate in the state, so we're, we're certainly not against that. But we think it should be done in a measured, thoughtful way. And not knowing how these dollars, approximately twenty-five to thirty percent of our, our revenue, or our property tax revenue, will be made up, causes us pause. And, you know, we, we say it all the time here in Mon County, how we don't feel like we're getting our fair share from the state. So removing this, this power from the three of us and giving it to a hundred and thirty-four people in Charleston, I think, scares me. Uh, frankly scares me, and, and I think the, the public needs to consider that. Another, there's a couple of other things that we need to make sure, um, that are considered. And one I had, I had thought about, but, um, someone brought it to my attention last week, is how this would affect our, our bond rating, uh, capacity. The way we do our bonds, uh, they're based off of future income, and those things, those, that income is projected twenty-five, thirty years out. With something like this that would require yearly funding from the state, that would, that would basically decrease our bonding capacity by twenty-five, thirty percent because that, we can't, um, we can't count on those dollars. That's, that's why we don't put any bonds on any of our excess levies. When we pass these excess levies, they can't issue bonds because the voters have to renew those every four or five years. So, um, this would be the same thing. So we have to remember that, you know, that's an effect of this too. Overall, and I've, I've done a lot of research on this. We've done a lot of research on this. This plan has changed multiple times. And I applaud the state senate's efforts to try to come up with a plan. But right now, everything changes so quickly. We got a, we got a version of this last week that actually included incomes tax cuts in their plan. So, again, there's no way to really understand this from our perspective, and we live this. So we're just, we want to sound the alarm for the public to, to really consider their vote when they do this. And one other thing, and I appreciate the, the assessor, as he's been very busy in trying to, um, provide, do the same thing, provide the information to the public. But he had, uh, provided me a case study from Ohio, and I want to read a, a line that was in this email from the individual that sent us to us from Ohio. He said, "The bottom line is, when the state did the two thousand and five tax reforms, I think counties could see the replacement funds wouldn't be permanent, which was concerning enough. However, as we frequently see, especially in legislature with term limits, promises to replace lost revenue are often modified or discarded by a new crop of lawmakers, administrators, years later. You may be able to secure a long-term, term deal to replace funds, but that agreement." You may be able to secure a long-term deal to replace funds, but that agreement is always subject to the whims of future legislatures. One recession can quickly reshape old promises." So again, we put a lot of effort into this. We wanted to wait a little, to wait, again, what we were getting from the state kept changing, but we did look at this very thoroughly. We wanted to wait till closer to the elections, so people were actually paying attention to this issue, but I believe we're unanimous in supporting this, this resolution, and I think our reasons are very clearly stated in our resolution.
To me, it comes down to the lack of guaranteed funds. Right now, we have guaranteed funds that we can generate based on taxing these things. And what it's gonna turn into in the future potentially is, we're gonna be Oliver, asking for more, waiting at the food line, and asking the state to bestow us upon, bestow upon us these funds that we rightfully have now. And those funds go to pay for crucial services, and our Board of Education, their funds will be tied to this as well. So that, potentially, so that's the fear we have, losing that control and the ability to basically do it ourselves, which we feel in Mon County, we've done pretty well for a long time, and hopefully can continue to do in the future. But that's the lack of control, and being beholden to the state to bestow upon us future funds is the biggest concern that I have, so.
And that's the important point. Here in Mon County, because we've been good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, we have the most flexibility to deal with this, but it's a problem across the state. Thirty-eight counties are maxed out at the county rate of fourteen point three. There's two counties that are maxed out at the, at the regular levy plus excess levy rate. Schools, there's thirty-three counties are maxed out at the levy rate, and then fourteen are maxed out at the excess levy cap. And municipalities, a hundred and eighty-six of the two hundred and forty-two municipalities in the state are maxed out at the twelve point five capacity. So, and those numbers have been climbing. You know, everybody's increasing their rates, not decreasing their rates. So that's, that speaks to the lax, lack of flexibility if this ends up in our laps.
In addition, it calls into question our ability to pass TIFs in TIF districts. I don't think anyone in Montague County would argue that West Ridge has been a boom for this county, and all the businesses, and everything, all the development that's gone out there, and the University Town Center, and Gateway, and the airport project, the business park and the expansion, those things are all predicated on tax incentive finance districts that use the very taxes that are generated to pay for those bonds that Commissioner Skor was talking about, and that's how we develop these areas.
I think you left out of the industrial park, which is the biggest example.
Yeah, the industrial park, that's bringing in up to a thousand employees over the next ten years in that entire park. So these are things we may not be able to do in the future, and then you'd be relying on the state to make the infrastructure improvements that attract these businesses in, so they can actually put up the factories and the businesses. And I don't have the confidence that that would occur.
And where it's critical to the industrial park is the equipment side of it, which would come off the books.
Right.
Because that, they're putting a hundred and fifty million dollars of equipment in those, in that plant over there, and that could come off the books.
And they came here willingly, knowing that tax would be in place, and it wasn't a deterrent to bring them to Montague County to put the businesses in. So, I mean, we're preaching to the choir, but that's why we have the concern and why we passed this resolution. It's not a willy-nilly, don't tell us what to do kind of thing. They're a legitimate concern.
I apologize, Sean, one sentence.
No, Tom, I.
No, no. It's a thank you to Mark Music and the program that he presented, because he made it very clear that it's either guaranteed funding versus intent funding, and that's all I'll say, because that really is the key, and I want to thank you for that, and I'm glad everyone was able to show up. With that, go ahead.
Could I ask, would you like to say anything?
And say anything at all, or?
I, you know what?
It's a Tom Bloom.
Since you've worked so hard on that, I went to give you the opportunity.
I appreciate that, but from our end, but even from our whole Assessors Association, we just had our fall meeting the last couple of days, and it really went well. I mean, a lot of the other counties are reaching out, especially the smaller counties now, to get some presentations done. I think they're understanding now the whole component of what the amendment is from a standpoint of concerns. And I think that's what you all have said. I mean, that is the concern, to give up the authority as a, as a voter to the state to go ahead and look at this, and not knowing for sure how this thing would pan out.
And the governor has come out vehemently against it.
Yes.
And to the extent that they are advertising as much, so.
Yeah. And, but it's just one of those things where we're hoping that the education part of it just gives people that component to say, hey, this is what this amendment is, and this is what it consists of. They can make their decision based off of that. But, you know, credit to our Assessors Association for a lot of the work those folks have done from that end, and from Waco as a whole. I mean, all the elected offices there have come together and looked at this thing, because it affects budgets, and we know, and look at our emergency personnel. You know, that's, that's another key component there we could lose. But I thank you all for the kind words, and we'll continue to do it. I know I've been invited to the, for Granville, for their city council meeting, and for Star Cities. So Patrick and I will be doing that in the next couple of weeks there, so hopefully we continue to get that message out.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mark.
So it's a poppy move in second. All those in favor in supporting this resolution, say aye?
Aye.
Those against? Passed unanimously. Good. Any other new business?
Yes. I have this on my calendar, but when I was doing the agenda on Friday, I don't know what happened, I just completely left it off. But the county clerk is asking that the poll workers in precincts for the November eighth general election be approved. You have the list of each in your, in your folders. I just need a motion to approve that.
Could I ask you one question?
Sure.
Have you received any correspondence? I was at a meeting last night at Mon County Republican Executive Committee, and they were indicating that they were still reviewing the list, and I told them they had till this morning to provide you any objections. Do you have any objections?
Um.
Or do you have any emails from?
I didn't see anything.
No.
Okay. Well, I'm assuming maybe they didn't have any, but they, they indicated that they were still reviewing the list, because they asked when it was going to be approved, and I said, well, it's on the agenda for the morning.
Okay.
So having no, seen no objections, I would move that we approve the list as presented.
Poppy move in second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Just to note, there are forty-three precincts at twenty-six different locations. The early voting locations will be Mountaineer Mall, at the Election Center, at Mason Dixon Park, in the Red Barn, Westover VFW, post nine-nine-one-six, and Pierpont Landing in the location of the former Earth Dodge business.
Can I read the part about the payment?
Payment for poll workers?
Yes.
Okay. Two hundred and seventy-two dollars for working Election Day, and attending the training, fifty dollars for training, and two-twenty-two for Election Day, ten dollars extra paid for staying with the election equipment until the movers arrive, and fifteen dollars extra paid to escorts who bring the election material back to the election center after voting is concluded.
Okay. We're approving the poll locations and the poll workers?
Correct.
We need to specifically state that in the motion?
Um.
Well, go ahead. Let's approve the poll workers.
Yeah, the motion's on the floor, so all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Just to be clear, approve the poll locations and.
And early voting locations.
And early voting locations, and payment information provided by the county clerk.
Second. Poppy move in second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Passed. Okay. Do we have any other new business?
No.
Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, we will now have reports from elected officials or department supervisors. Come on in.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mike Paul, GIS coordinator here in Montague County. I got a really neat email on Friday, and I forwarded, I think, on to you guys and Commissioner Blum. I just wanted to say, looks like we got published. So for the National Association of Counties Conference, I think yourself and a couple of the other county employees were able to attend in the Colorado area this summer. I think you threw an email out to me real quick, so we could develop something to submit directly to Esri. Esri was a massive, obviously, that's our mapping software, global company that we work with for our software here in Montague County, and they were represented, they represented themselves there at the conference you guys were at. So they sent out an email earlier in the summer for those who were attending, if anyone that would like to submit something for their national publishing of their map book. And so I put something together real quick to represent what we're doing here in Montague County, never heard anything back, and I got an email Friday saying we were gonna be published in the book. So really cool news, and what I focused on, and I just wanted to let you guys know this, and what was really neat about what you were just speaking about with the, you know, the tax improvement and everything going on, what I focused on was the University Town Center TIF district, showing the amount of earth that has been moved, and all the different businesses that have gone in since that TIF was created in two thousand and twelve, addition added on to in two thousand and fifteen. And Mark and the assessor and I have been working together for quite some time, having that aerial imagery flown every year since about two thousand and fifteen, because of the amount of development that's gone on in Mon County. So I did a side-by-side map from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty-two, since we just got our imagery in back in May, to show that difference. And I just wanted to kind of read the headline they gave us on page fifty-seven of the book. It says, "Fastest-growing county enhances planning with location intelligence." So it's just been really neat to see how we've grown so far, and, you know, since Tom, you've been in office, and Mark's been in office with our GIS, and with the magic collaboration group that is going on, we've had other of the municipalities come on board recently. Mark has brought Westover to the table, so hopefully, you know, they'll be contributing from a, you know, down the road into a monetary standpoint towards some of the side projects we have going on, and further communication. So I just really want to give credit where credit was due of all of us working together as a whole under the county commission umbrella with the assessor's office, Jimmy and his staff at nine-one-one, just for the increment that we've done in our GIS technology here over the years. So it's been kind of cool to see, so.
Great. Thank you, Mike.
And they were at the, because I did talk with them.
Yeah, yeah.
So I was, I'm real excited that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, yeah, it must have meant a lot.
Yeah, I know. I was like, well, wherever, you know.
But no, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I thought it was neat that we got the email on Friday, but I'll forward that, guys. They're gonna send us hard copies of the actual book once it's published, and I'll give you guys one.
Okay. Thanks.
And also, I just have a minute or two to pick your brain for a second. We did get the data from Lit, our broadband people, and finally, just the mapping data they used in the, their study for us. So we were gonna put something together to kind of show that new LiDAR data we had done, so we can kind of get some more, I guess you could say, personal mapping for the western end of the county, for that Ring eleven and everything. So I was gonna put something together for you guys, so when you communicate with them, you can show specifically what needs to be done in that area.
Yes. And I know a lot of those final things, because they're doing a lot of the right-of-way discussions and trying to find the final location, but if we have an ability to point to where we're talking about running service, once we get farther down the road, that would be great, that the public can look at it and actually see how it affects them.
Yeah, that'd be great. All right, guys, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing none, we will have Commissioner Sean.
Since the last meeting, last Thursday was the, that's the rough Thursday of the month where I have all my meetings, but it was a little light last week. We had, we didn't have a map executive committee meeting, but we had a red team meeting and development authority meeting. Friday, we had staff reports, and we had our bi-weekly broadband tag up. Monday, I had lunch with a constituent. Tuesday, we had our Juma meeting, and as I indicated earlier, last evening, I attended the Mon County Republican Executive Convention meeting as a, as a citizen. Today's a normal day. Tomorrow is Mile and Park Executive Board meeting, and then I believe there's a Mills on Will's picnic in the afternoon.
Yes.
Friday, we have staff reports, and then we have a number of events in conjunction with the mountaintop beverage facility, so looking forward to that. Saturday, I am, I did send in my, my check for the game on Saturday. You guys going?
Yes.
The Towson game, the invitation we got from W.
Oh, no, no.
Okay. Well, again, I was joking earlier, you know, we, everybody's disappointed in the game last Saturday, but it doesn't, you know, we're pretty special to have, you know, essentially a pro team here in Mon County, and, you know, we're still smarting from the Pitt game, we're really smarting from the Kansas game, but I think we have a lot of season left, and I'm looking forward to participating in that. We are invited by W. I believe all the elected officials are invited, so I haven't, I've never attended that as a commissioner, but given what, I sent my check in on Monday, given what happened on Saturday, I think I needed to show my support, so I decided to go. Do want to point, obviously, Sunday was nine-eleven, and I hope everybody took time to, you know, recognize where they were twenty-one years ago, and really just think about all the people and the families that were affected by that tragedy. As I mentioned a couple of times, I went to New York just a couple years, or a couple weeks ago and saw the museum for the first time, and I bought a couple of books back. But it's really cool, what was, the most haunting thing of the whole thing was this, you weren't allowed to take pictures, but it was the, what they called the, the memorial exhibition, where they had all the pictures on the wall. And when you go and you just see, and there was like, there was like five or six people that had ties to Morgantown, ties to Mon County, you know, obviously, the, you know, Chris Gray was the one I knew the most, I didn't know any of the others, but it was pretty interesting, and, you know, recalling Tom Witt's being, being at the Marriott next door. So it's a, people shouldn't forget. I think sometimes we get too busy with, you know, the news of the day, and, you know, the, just the normal, normal news and everything, so, so negative, just take a couple of seconds and kind of think about what it's all about. I remember, I remember back nine-eleven, when they shut down everything, and working at the N E T L, N E T L shut down, they shut down the daycare. I had to immediately, I was in Chester at the time, we were going out to do a site visit for teaming and win visit at Conference at Mountaineer, and we were traveling with some guys that were Army guys, and they stopped, pulled over, and just pulled over and said, they couldn't get us on the cell phone, because we were out of cell service, so they just pulled over, and they're like, we're under attack. These guys were like Army guys that are still involved, like they do a lot of contracts for Army, and they're like, we're under attack. And I was like, what are you talking about? And it was just so, like, it was numb, and you get back, and there's no, you don't notice, like, you see a plane every once in a while, but when there's none in the sky, it was really eerie that whole day, and just, you know, I'm glad, I'm glad, people should just take time to remember where we were, how we were united going through that, and just sometimes wish we can get back to that. So that's all I have to say, and I appreciate the lady coming in from Bon Vista. It does sound like there's a number of things there that we can deal with, and hopefully we can get engaged. Again, we don't always have the power to do things to address every single issue, but we can certainly have the power of this bully pulpit to make it public and get the right people in a room that can address those issues, and, you know, we're always glad to do that. One last thing, I did see where it came in while we were meeting, but Senator, as far as correspondence, Renetta, Senator Clementson an email of all the road projects. He called me yesterday, those extra road projects that are approved, so I did want to make that, note that under correspondence, and I just forwarded that to you, Renetta, and if you can print it off if the press wants it, but it's a, it's a big list of all the extra projects they did, and it lists all the ones in Mon County.
Mon County, okay.
Thank you.
Just a few things to follow up on Mike Paul's statement. I can tell you, I'm a title attorney by trade in my day job, and the GIS system that Mon County has is unparalleled to any other in the state. Most of the state uses a similar database that kind of blankets through the state, and our GIS system is truly unbelievable. If you've never gotten on there and played with it, you can look at the contours of the land, you can, you can look at the aerial photos, you can look at straight grids, it's really quite remarkable, everything your office has done. So from a personal standpoint, I thank you, because I use it every day. Secondly, we approve the poll workers. I'd like to thank all of them for volunteering to work the polls, they're an essential part of the process. We obviously couldn't do the elections without them, and it's an essential component of our democracy, and everyone should get out and vote and have your voice be heard, and we really thank them for stepping forward to do that. And lastly, Labor Day weekend marked the closure of the season for our new pool at Camp Muffley, and it was a remarkable success this summer. I think at one point, we had a hundred and twenty kids in that pool for one day, so our record numbers, the response has been fabulous, and I think next year will be even, even busier. And we, especially along that line, like to thank our parks director, J R Petsko, who immersed himself fully and became a certified pool operator and a lifeguard, so much to the extent that he even had to jump in at one point and save a kid. So he has been essential out there with our. So he has been essential out there with our transition and leadership at that park, and we couldn't have done it without him, and we thank him for all the efforts that he made in that regard.
Thank you. A couple short issues. I was fortunate to speak to the Morgantown Realtors Group at 11:30, and Mark, I used much of your material, I shared them, and surprisingly, and several had discussed that they were voting for it, and then afterwards said, I'm not sure now, which means they were going to go back to look at the material, but they are also meeting with the legislators coming up, and they're going to discuss that issue. So they were, they were quite shocked that they had not realized what it meant, especially to their organization and selling houses and so on, so, and businesses, too. So it was, it was really good. I was then supposed to go to the Built for Zero Morgantown Task Force, and they gave me directions, and I want you to know that I did try for half an hour. It's on the WVU Hospital campus, and the building's called Irma Berg Building. It must be a new building because no one could find it. I even asked the security, and they did not, so when I finally contacted the people, they said, half the people didn't make it because they changed the name and they could not find this building. It's connected to the Cancer Society, but it's a certain wing, and it's a specific building, so I apologize not attending. Let's see, yeah. Mike, I do want to thank you. When I was at the convention, I did talk with them, and they actually knew of Morgantown, West Virginia, which made me feel really good. So they must have, yeah, just gotten your material, so they were very excited and pleased. I did not realize how pleased they were, and that was really good news. I think that is it. Looking forward to the naming of the worst-kept secret in Morgantown on Friday. Looking forward to that company that's going to top off their building, and I believe, yes, and that, and that is it. I look forward to having a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
So moved.
Second.
Sorry.
We be gone. Thank you.